All right, I think everybody's here. Welcome Board of Selectmen and guests. And I will turn it immediately to Town Administrator Kate Rush to deliver her budget proposal to us.
Okay. All right, you should all be able to see my my screen now with the PowerPoint presentation. So. Yeah. First up is just a budget timeline to show where we are. We started back in December with department heads having to submit their budgets to me. They were due mid-December. And then this is where we are now, the 25th of January. After the Board of Selectmen finishes their work, it'll go to the Board of Finance on the second to a public hearing, March 9th. Board of Finance vote is scheduled for April 6th, and then the RTM vote in May. We're going to be doing a virtual budget process this year. Due to COVID concerns, all the workshops will be virtual. Budget books will not be printed at this level. That was, well, it's a trial this year, and we'll see how it works. The Selectmen have been provided with access to our budget software online so that they can review the budgets online. Other elected officials have also been provided access. During the budget workshops, as each department is reviewed, their proposal will be shown on screen in Open Gov, and any other backup material that they've provided to us will also be shown online. So just a couple, if you haven't, you know, played around with it yet, a couple screenshots to show what they look like. This is what a fund-level screen looks like. This is where you would see some of the detail on the, I'm sorry, some of the narrative. And then this is what a detail screen looks like. So the process will be, I'm going to be sharing my screen, as I said, during the virtual meetings, so that board members and other attendees can see the departments and accounts that are under discussion. When we're doing that, I would say, you know, especially to the Board of Selectmen, speak up if I go too fast, if I skip over something that you want to ask a question about. Sometimes I become so familiar with these accounts, what we're doing, that I may not see something as important that you have a, that you feel is important. So please stop me if I move too fast for you. After the Selectmen have had the opportunity to ask their questions, the first Selectmen will invite other elected officials to ask questions. And then also post on the open Darien section of the town's website, there are PDF files showing all the budget line items with subtotals by department, and there's an executive summary on that page as well. So I want to remind you that this is not just a budget. It's a plan for delivering services, for meeting the goals and objectives of the Board of Selectmen, for addressing growth in the town, and fulfilling taxpayer needs. It's vital that you, the Board of Selectmen, be clear, be vocal about your priorities and your reasoning in budget decisions, so that you impact Board of Finance decisions. You're going to be talking about not just monetary decisions, but policy decisions. And I would say that there are different approaches to crafting a budget. You might establish what you need to carry out your goals, then determine which priorities get funded, or you establish what you can afford to fund, and then determine which priorities can fit within that budget. Personally, I prefer the former, but that's up to you as a board to decide how you want to approach things. And you may find that you need to decide between competing priorities. One thing that you can look to is performance measures, may be able to help you determine where funding will have more impact. So last one about things to think about as you review the budget proposal. You know, we're not looking to simply maintain our current level of services provided to the taxpayers, but can we improve and expand the services we provide? How can we provide the services more efficiently? Can we provide them in a manner that's more convenient for the taxpayer? We've done a lot of that in this past year. How have we addressed the impacts of COVID-19? And how can we do all this and still minimize the impact on the tax rate? Give you an overview of what we're looking at with the general fund. Some of the apparent increase in the expenditure budget is related to funding decisions and changes that the Board of Finance made over the last year or so. There are some increases to fund new programs, or to continue with implementation of programs begun in prior years. Some of our increases are COVID-related, as well as some decreases. And some proposals are related to weaknesses we found while managing during a pandemic. And I do want to say before we go any further that I think department heads, as always, did their best to come in with lean budgets, and I found it very difficult this year to make cuts. So continuing with the overview, what we're looking at here is the town side of the budget broken up into major categories. The biggest part of it is the town operations. It's the bright blue. That's 51% of the town's budget. Capital contribution this year is, as it stands right now, is 8%. Debt service, the light blue, is 20%. The library in purple is 8%. Pension and OPEB funding is 4%, and other benefits are 9%. Out of that 51% of the town operations, the major cost centers are public safety, which is police, fire. That's 42% of the 51%. Public Works makes up another 17%, so you can see those two areas make up the bulk of the town operations. And then if we look at the 20% of debt service, little over half of that is for Board of Education debt service, 44% is for town debt service, and just a small piece for sewer debt service. Just to point out, last year, the major, the way that pie has changed for the most part, last year, the capital contribution was 3%, town operations was 55%, and the library was closer to 9%. Okay. As I go to this next slide, I'm going to ask you to try and focus on the top line, the town operations number, and not the bottom line. The proposed budget for town operations is up about 4.5%. The other benefits category is up 5%. Pension and OPEB costs are up almost 14%. The library is up 2.67%. Debt service is up 14%. Funding for capital is up 181%. There's no way to couch that. We will talk later about what's going on there. So where some of those increases are coming from, in the Board of Selectment Department, which is 1.36% of town operations. We're going to show an increase in headcount and expense in that budget. The headcount is for a part-time public information officer at a cost of $28,000 to handle public communications, managing social media and the website. While managing the pandemic, it became clear that communication with the public is a function where the town needs more professional expertise, which is what has led to this proposed funding. The other item there that's causing an increase is funding for consultants. We're looking to fund grant writer, wayfinding project for the downtown, and study the structure of our emergency services function to recommend and implement best practices. You know, we've worked very hard to take advantage of grant opportunities, however, we've missed out on opportunities because we don't have the time to put towards writing the grants, so we'd like some assistance with that. As the redevelopment, oops, go back, as the redevelopment projects get underway, signage to help residents and visitors come to the downtown and do shopping will really help. And then we need to take a look at emergency services from, to make sure that we're doing the best job we can, that it's organized the best way possible. The next area I want to highlight with increases is the police department. The police department alone makes up 33.5% of the town operations. So as you might expect, a large part of the funding there is, or increase there, is for civilianizing the dispatch. What's in the budget for this purpose is not including benefits, is $119,000. The funding is provided to add the third shift of dispatchers in January of 2022. I had, there were two things that factor into my decision here. One, that with RTM approval of the budget occurring in May, we can't possibly get dispatchers onboard in July, so I didn't see the point of funding them right away. I also felt that, I've seen a study recently from West Cog that talks about regionalizing dispatch, and it is something that we, I believe we should evaluate. I'm not convinced that it's the way to go, but if we only, if we wait until January to start that third shift, that gives the administration time to evaluate and make sure that we are on the right path in that regard. Police accountability, yeah, I think my $26,000 here, this refers to just some of the training that has to happen, but the new law has forced us to fund some additional training, evaluations, testing, equipment. You'll see some things in the capital that we have to do to comply with the police accountability law. And then we have, we need to do testing this year. We're anticipating some vacancies. We already know of one, but all of our hiring and promotional lists expire in May, so we will have no lists, and we need to test at all, at all levels. Some of the other notable causes of increases. Pension and OPEB contributions are up $267,000. It's primarily due to investment returns lagging assumptions. Our cost for EMS is up. We have a contractual increase in our agreement with SEMS, but we're also noticing that the revenue offsets are down, and we believe that's due to less ambulance runs due to COVID. Beach security services, up $32,000. This is to continue the park monitor service that was begun last year as a result of our beach closures for COVID. Debt service is up 1.25 million. If you recall, in a prior year, the Board of Finance did some refunding of outstanding bonds and used it to pay down debt that would have been payable in fiscal '21. So what I'm saying here is that it brought '21 down lower than it would otherwise have been, which makes this increase look higher than it otherwise would have been. We also are anticipating doing a new bond issue in the fall that will support some town projects, but primarily for the Oxford Elementary School. Contingency is up. That is due to having two open union contracts. And lastly, the capital funding, which again, we'll talk about later. Some other things I want to point out. We are looking to increase the hours for our part-time sanitarians. A lot of that has to do with COVID needs. Parks and Rec has access to bring back some more beast control. Election costs are down. Fiscal '21 included funding for two elections. Fiscal '22 only funds one election. And youth services, the program expenses are reduced because of limits, COVID-related limitations on their programs. Medical insurance, there is a modest increase primarily due to the increased headcount. We are right now looking at a premium rate increase of less than 4%. We do expect that we will be able to get that down further. If not by the time the Board of Selectmen finishes their budget, certainly by the time the Board of Finance is working on it. You may also notice that there's an increase in building for software support that's offset by a reduction in planning for the same, and an increase in human resources full-time, which is offset by a reduction in the town administrator full-time, that was reallocating administrative support hours between the two functions. Going into capital, so the first and I think the most important thing is that this proposal assumes the majority of the funding will be provided through a transfer from the general fund. It's really not up to me to say to the Board of Finance that, you know, you ought to bond for this, or you ought to use fund balance for that. You know, take money from the reserves that you're closing. So I think that big increase that we're seeing will be offset, or could be offset, by actions the Board of Finance takes later. I didn't want to reduce some of our normal capital, knowing that that was a possibility. If they choose to reduce, or if you choose to, I don't have an issue with it, but I wanted to keep in the things that I felt were important to be continuing with, such as our paving program. So the Board of Finance made a decision to modify or eliminate some of the ongoing reserve counts, and that has had an impact. My focus was on priority one projects, and I also tried to look at some of the lower-cost priority two and three projects. And I would just say, there were many worthy projects, and it was really, really hard to cut, but I did. So the highlights on some things that I funded or proposed for funding. A PD server replacement, that's about $120,000. There are a variety of technology improvements for the police department in terms of software and hardware. Multiple public safety and emergency response projects. Ongoing paving and sidewalk improvements at a cost of almost $2 million. Town hall facility improvements, the gymnasium windows and doors. And then some quality of life and efficiency projects for parks and recreation. I wanted to highlight one of the things that, when I talked about the replacement program. So the fire departments, the fiscal '21 budget included no contribution for the fire apparatus replacement fund. The Board of Finance implemented a new funding model for equipment replacement funds, and I think it's, I think it's a good model, but it places a larger burden on the fiscal '22 budget than the past model had. So figured the prior year's contributions had been in the $600,000 range. This new funding model puts it over $800,000. And I think, you know, we need to think about, some of those large public safety projects are starting to crowd out other capital projects. And I think it would be helpful for the future to have an overall picture for the fire departments, showing more coordination between the departments and operating in capital with a town-wide priority structure for their capital requests. You know, Nuroten Heights also asked for a couple of projects, not as expensive as some that were funded, but for their building, for their property. And I've said this to previous Boards of Selectmen, I think it's important, before you choose to fund those projects, that we have a policy that talks about exactly that. These buildings, we don't own, so when you put money into repairing or improving those properties, do you want to get something out of that? Do you want any kind of agreement with the fire departments recognizing the fact that you've improved their property? Last, we'll just quick go over sewer funds. The sewer operation and capital funds, they fund the operations, the maintenance. The largest single expense is the fees that we pay to Stanford for treatment, and they support capital projects. This year, one of the important things we're doing out of these funds are replacing the pumps in the pump house. It's been a long-term project for Sewer Department. Parking fund. Parking fund, the fiscal '21 revenues are dramatically off from normal years. The revenue for fiscal '22 is anticipated to be insufficient to support normal staffing levels. And I would also say, without normal staffing levels, enforcement activity does not provide sufficient activity for two full-time rangers. So the proposed budget reflects one position being eliminated for the first six months with the hope that by 2022, we are getting back to more normal activity levels. And that is it.
Kate, thank you very much. Really appreciate that, and I also appreciate how difficult it is to make the funding or cut decisions. I do want to thank the Darien Library for a very thoughtful budget this year to be mindful of expenditure increases. We know we have some big work to do. The Board of Finance has given us a directive as a town to, you know, look at a budget increase of no more than about 3%, I believe. So as I look at these numbers, it looks like we have two buckets that we can, we can really dive into and discuss, and that's town operations and capital aggregating about $3.8 million. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. I would like to open it up to my board for any questions that they have for Kate in her presentation. Obviously, we're going to dive into the detail tomorrow night, so we're not going to go into detail this evening, so, you know, high-level questions first from the Board of Selectmen on Kate's budget proposal this evening. Board of Selectmen members, David, do you have any comments for Kate this evening? Comments or questions?
No, I'm sure we'll get into all of the details on their respective nights that are laid out in the calendar.
Okay. Krista? You're on mute, Krista.
No, I agree. Thank you very much, Kate, for the overview. I'll reserve my questions as we get into discussion for tomorrow, particularly, I think regarding the public information officer and the consultant, you know, to really get more information as to your thoughts there, and that will be my line of questioning, but that would be for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Sarah?
Agreed. I look forward to, you know, diving deeper into each of these budgets.
And Kim?
I'm just hoping we can spend more time talking about the executive summary than the nitty-gritty of each department. Seems to me the executive summary is a pretty good overview of what's going on, and it's worthy of going to that, in my opinion.
Absolutely. Do you have any particular questions or things that you'd like clarified from the executive summary this evening?
I would just like to know, it says the budget does not, it does contain a list of other non-budgeted funds and their fund balances as of the most recent audit. I guess I just need to remind myself, or have someone remind me, what are the other funds that are not in the budget?
There are gift funds, there's the pension and OPEB funds, specialized construction funds, you know, capital project funds. Jen, you want to chime in?
Sure. Most of those were, they were smaller funds that the F&amp;B had looked at a few years ago, and actually, I would have to send that out as a separate document because we don't have a spot for it in Open Gov, but it would be the police and fire alarm funds, gift and donation funds.
I think you've answered the question, Jen. They're not, they're not significant.
Correct. It's more for informational purposes, just to let people know what other funds we have out there and what their balances are, but they are not significant.
I would say some of them are significant. 76 million.
We have not included the trust funds or the bond funds in that list. This was, came out of F&amp;B in their fund review, which were focused on the smaller funds.
Yeah, and Kim, if you look at the, if you look at the audit report, you'll see all the funds.
I'd be happy to go into that. The other thing I wanted to say was that the, the underperformance of the pension fund, it's probably due to the fact that the pension fund's performance is probably over a year ago, that they're recording, and it would see, I would, I would love to know what results happened in this past year. You know, I'm sure it's not going to be shown up until another year from now in terms of the way that Pepsin's report.
Right, because they also, they do smooth the results over a number of years.
Yep. So I'm going to take that with a grain of salt that it was underfunded.
It's not underfunded. It was that, you know, the assumptions for the investment return were over about 6.375, and we didn't get there.
Yeah, but you did this year. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kim. I'd like to, I see the Chairman of the Board of Finance here this evening, Mr. Zagrodzki. I don't know if you have any questions for Kate on her proposed budget this evening, or if we want to wait until we dive into the fund tomorrow night.
Yeah, I'd like to take a closer look. I think the point about the pension contribution is a good one. It's a combination of the changes and assumptions that were made a couple of years ago, but it's also driven a lot by demographics and other factors, so we ought to take a close look at that. I was surprised at the size of the amount, given the smoothing point that you brought up, Kate, but let's, let's explore that further. I don't have any other reactions. I mean, we articulated a budget guidance that we thought was consistent with providing service delivery, both for the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen, and still to be consistent with financial prudence that we thought was warranted at this time in town. And so, all that said, my bias is to make sure that we deliver the town services we're supposed to deliver, and if on occasion like this, it's going to require something more than what's been prescribed in terms of the target, then let's have a discussion about that. Like I said, we'll get through this, and let's take, look at some more detail, and we'll be in touch as this process unfolds.
Thank you, John. Are there other members of the Board of Finance that have any questions for Kate this evening? Okay, hearing none, then I'll turn to Mr. Davis to see if he has any questions for Kate on behalf of F&amp;B.
No, I did want to compliment Kate on a very nice executive summary. I think it does set the tone. I do believe that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed, both their budgets this year really have to be looked at as a two-year budget because of the modifications that were made by both boards when we were addressing COVID. So that's one of the challenges, I thought Kate did a nice job of that.
Thank you for that, John. Appreciate that.
Can I just say credit on that executive summary? Jen is the one who developed it, and I just helped with some of the, some of the words. And, you know, and just the point, Jack, you made about COVID, you know, one of the things I think is going to be difficult in reviewing the budget this year is the 1920 numbers are a little skewed because of the expenditures we have in the final quarter, and the 2021 budget numbers, you know, they're skewed as well because of things we haven't done, or things where we had to go higher on. It's not, it's not going to be a normal budget. Well, trying to compare to prior years is, is not normal.
And that's why we have even said to the Board of Ed that, from our committee, we're looking at it almost being two years of budget in one because there's so many modifications that had to be done. And, you know, kudos to both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen for what they've done in the six months under this, or nine months under this very difficult situation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, we do have to be mindful. You know, we do have to be mindful that, and we were last year of the potential impacts on the Darien taxpayers. I think those impacts still exist. You know, we're certainly not out of the pandemic woods yet, for sure. And we will have some other pressures that we have to be mindful of as we go through the budget process. One of those being the specter of a statewide mill rate for real property. So, you know, we just want to keep that in the back of our mind. We won't certainly know the outcome of that until the end of the legislative session, but we can do our part here for the Darien taxpayers. But in doing our part, it's as much about keeping expenditures down as it is about investing in the future, investing wisely. Making sure that we are setting the right priorities for the Board of Selectmen's spending plan and to, to do things that really do create efficiencies. Advance us from a technology perspective. And deliver the level of service that the taxpayers, quite frankly, demand from us. So I know we're mindful of that every year. This year is going to be a challenge for us, but I have great hope that the Board of Selectmen and all of our friends that will join us on our budget nights going forward will be able to do that hard work and come out with a good budget project, product at the end. So I want to make sure that everyone knows that Kate and Jen and I are available at any time to receive your input, your comments, your questions. And if there are no other comments this evening, I know we're, some of us are going to be joining in the RTM meeting. We will look forward to seeing all of you at our first budget meeting, which is tomorrow night, beginning at 5:30 PM. And we will go through a whole slew of cost centers tomorrow evening. So I look forward to that discussion. And Kate, thank you very much for your, your presentation and thoughtful deliberation.
Just a reminder to people, we're using the same link for every meeting, for every budget workshop, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Summary is on the website now?
Hi, Krista?
Is the executive summary, I'm sorry, I haven't checked, on the website?
Yes, if you go to the Open, Open Darien tab, Jen is going to add the PowerPoint presentation up there as well.
Great. Thank you.
Connected to our meeting schedule or only to Open Gov? Could be added as, if someone wanted to get information on tonight's meeting?
The, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean.
Under the Board of Selectmen meetings?
Mm-hmm. You want the executive summary added there?
I mean, I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible for residents to find both the executive summary and your PowerPoint, which were.
Yep, I can, I can, we'll have that added in the morning too.
Yeah, just tomorrow. Thank you so much, just for the public to be able to follow along and find it easily.
Yep, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.